Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards.
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, we, we stand before you this evening, first of all, with gratitude in our hearts for how you have blessed our lives in so many ways. Father, we thank you for your continued protection over this community. And our prayer tonight, Father, is for that to continue. We pray for our families, for those who are first responders, for the men and women in this room, for the decisions that need to be made, for the vision for this community, for that which will honor and glorify you. Father, we lift all this before you and seek your guidance, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Do we have any veterans in the audience tonight? You lead us into pledge, please. Mr. Ward.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you take the roll call, please?
Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Councilwoman Neal.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
I will point out that Mrs. Uselek did call, and she's feeling under the weather tonight, so we send her our regards. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we are honored again to be swearing in a new Maryville Police Officer, Patrolman Craig Karadine. Please approach the center here on this side of the table with the Police Chief and Police Commissioners. And do you have the swearing-in information or the judge? Oh, Judge Velasco, please come up. And use the microphone, please, Judge. It's right there on the table, sir. Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Good evening, everyone. Officer, would you raise your right hand, please? And repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Craig Karadine.
Craig Karadine.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
And honestly.
discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
as a police officer.
As a police officer.
of Maryville Police Department.
Of Maryville Police Department.
of the town of Maryville, Indiana.
of the town of Maryville, Indiana.
according to law.
According to law.
and the best of my skill.
And the best of my skill.
and ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Chief Nusis, can you give us a little background about Officer Karadine?
Officer Karadine comes to us from Goshen Police Department. He is a, he's had approximately five years in law enforcement. Three of those years were in corrections and two years as a police officer. He is a transplant from Illinois into Indiana, grew up in Glenwood, and graduated from Homewood, Homewood Flossmore. We are very happy to bring Craig on the board, and I think he's going to be an excellent addition to our police department. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, Chief Nusis. Chaz, would you mind grabbing this group one, too, please?
Thank you.
Moving on tonight, we have the consent agenda, which includes the accounts payable registered voucher approval for October 10th, the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of September 26th, the approval of the budget meeting minutes of September 21st, and the approval of the ARP meeting minutes of September 26th. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Moving on this evening to standing and special committee reports, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the, at the proper time, the budget, I will make a motion for the adoption hearing on our proposed budget for 2024. That's ordinance number, what is it, 20, 23, 24? That, it will be coming later on in the, when we get to, I can't think of the right word. When we get to ordinance.
Yeah, general orders, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's, that's all I have. Oh, no, excuse me. We have a budget meeting on October 12th. Bear with me for one second, got a lot of paper tonight. Okay, on October 12th at 11:30, and also followed by Tuesday, October 17th at 11:30. These meetings will be held at the Sender Dalton Municipal Advisor's location, 233 East 84th Place. So, anyone that's welcome, 11:30 on Thursday of this week, and 11:30 on Tuesday of next week. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, Mr. Minchuck.
I did see that the town newsletter did come out in the mail. Of course, as I said many times before, the schedule is in there for the leaf collection, so please go ahead and read that. They come around two times, and bear with us, and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Mr. President, to Jeff and Steve, gotten comments from the constituents because of the weather, Steve, and not a lot of trees, leaves are falling, and people have asked, well, what about after Thanksgiving? Will we have a third pickup?
You know what? I've noticed every single year kind of gets later and later and later. If it comes to that point, I'll sit down and talk with Steve, and we'll see if we can maybe do something like that.
Yeah, because we actually pushed it back two weeks later this year than it was last year. It was warm last year.
Yep.
So, yeah, so if we have to adjust, as long as there's no snow on the ground, then we can adjust.
Believe it or not, there are still trees in Forest Hills, and a lot of comments out of Forest Hills about leaf collection.
Yeah.
So.
The way it's going, we might be doing leaf collection in January sometime.
Steve Hazzar, a new 86th Avenue working out and a new stop sign at 86th Avenue and Maryville Road.
It's working out well, so 86th Avenue is a new section of roadway that runs from Maryville Road to Broadway. That was open Friday, October 6th. New five-way stop was installed at 86th and Maryville Road to help with the traffic flow. It's a safety issue. It's, it's kind of always been a safety issue, even coming out of Sedona. There's, there's an incline there, there's a sight distance issue, so that's going to help the overall, the overall for that intersection.
Great, thank you. Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautifications, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. Wanted to just go over a reminder of the Trunk a Tree that is going to be hosted on October 26th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Dean and Barber White Community Center, and also in December 1st, the town of Maryville will have our tree lighting, and we're going to have a decorating, Christmas tree decorating contest. We're involving the school systems, all five of the elementary schools with, and that's going to be hosted at the center also between 5:30 and 7:30. Also, the town of Maryville, we're updating our signage, our gateway signages, and we're looking for a lot of assistance from, and help from our residents and the community. If you go to the webpage, there is a way on there where you can go and you can submit a slogan. We are actually going to choose one of the residents' slogan and to start our new signage program with hopefully sometime beginning of next year. In addition to that, Councilman Minchuck mentioned the newsletter is, should be showing up in you guys' mailbox. The one thing I would like to point out on here is that we have a barcode on the newsletter. This barcode is, it attaches to a link that will allow you to sign up and receive all the notifications of things that are going on in the town of Maryville. So this is just a new way that we're trying to reach out to people. It was mentioned in one of the town meetings that we should try additional new ways to try to communicate with the community, so this is a new way that we're going to try to communicate. So when you guys get these, please make sure that your family and your friends, everything will pop up, all the events will pop up, and this is a great way to communicate. I absolutely love it. And there's, we are talking now about the new, what we're going to do as far as our Christmas decoration, so plans will come with that soon. That's it.
Mr. President, to Councilwoman Neal, Rhonda, are we going to, with the gateway entry signs we talked about, and what about, are the park signs going to follow that same style?
Yes.
Because there's some park signs. I know I've got one in Forest Hills. Curtis Park needs to be done. I know we talked about that in the previous committee meetings.
Yeah, so the long-term goal is to replace all of those signs in the parks also. We probably will, we would like to see our new slogan on all of the signs for the town of Maryville, so that is a project that we are currently working on.
Okay.
Before we move on, Mrs. Neal, I do know that the newsletter did get out a little bit later. There's some dated material in the newsletter, and I know I received mine like a day after one of the dates that was in there, and I got a couple of calls from residents. I did talk to Mr. Griffin about it, and we're going to talk to the post office and see what we need to do, if we have to increase our time of presenting, or how to get the newsletter moved up on a priority list for mailing. I think it's, I think it pretty much goes last when there's room on the route, and so we may have to look at how we're delivering the newsletter, because it makes no sense to have someone receive it after an event's been advertised in it. So we're going to try to get that corrected. Right?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This is actually for Sean, because Sean, we had talked about the gateway for the past two years, and I don't know how you changed that. Not concerned too much about what Ms. Rhonda Neal is, but how did that change over where things we were working on two years ago just disappeared?
Oh, we haven't, no, we haven't abandoned, I think, are you referring to the bridges?
Yes.
The entry at 61st Avenue, we're still working, Bob and Steve are still working with Endot. We're, we're going to need Endot permission, Rhonda, and I think I, we talked about that at the last committee when Mr. President Bella switched the chairmanships, which, you know, I don't have a problem with, but yeah, we're not, no, we're absolutely not going away from that. It's just a matter of getting Endot's approval.
Sure. Well, also, I know you had, we had hired the firm, what they're, I can't think of the name.
Ars Group.
Ars Group. They gave us some data and some, some drawings, and you and I, a few others looked at that, so is that off the board now?
No. No, absolutely not.
Okay.
No?
Well, before I leave here, I'd like to see some of those ideas we had. I know you tried to give residents opportunity to participate, but I represent people, and I know what my people want to do. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. White, why don't you keep the floor and give us your report on environmental affairs?
Mr. President, I don't have a report on it, but I do have a request.
Okay.
I talked to Ms. Neal all about four days ago. There's an issue down at the city mall where people think there's some mold in there. I just hadn't had a chance yet, Rhonda, to get down there. Tomorrow will be my day to go down there and see if there's some actuality, what your request was, and then I'll give you that information, so you'll know. I think, I think some of the things you talked about was something like the smell, and sometimes you just got to look, or I don't know if the store has to actually hire people there, but I'd be absolutely honored to go down there and apply my experience to see if there's either mold or mildew, and if there's anything the town might want to do with that, bring like.
There was a lady, a vendor down there who I used for, to do work, and she was having some problems down there, and I asked Councilman White, since he was in environmental, was there any way that we could test for mold, or if he can go down there and just check it out, and let me know so I could follow up with her.
The county should be able to help us with that. I know Mr. Griffin talked to the county just today about the exact same issue, different location, Mr. White, so he has a new contact that he may be able to share with you.
Well, yeah, I was just sharing a conversation I had with Ms. Neal. It didn't bother me to apply what my knowledge is on how to deal with that. Now, if the county wants to go in there, and actually, it's Mr. Hardaway's ward.
Thank you.
If he wants to take that up, I, I have a problem with it.
I'll handle it.
All right.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, for Mrs. Uselek, anything to report, Michael, in her absence?
Mr. President, I think if there's, I guess this could wait until the, I beg the council's pardon, Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer, pro temporary, I have no report to offer you, but I do believe that there'll be a report at the time when you're going to ask for department heads' reports. That will suffice to be the report for Counselor Uselek and her committee.
Great.
And I thank the committee.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
One thing I got for the chief. Chief, as you ride, as you ride through the town, you see a lot of flags up now on people's property. We have ordinances that say that we can't have those flags, and I think when code enforcement arrives through the town, they must have blinders on, because none of these flags should be up, up and down Broadway. It looks like you're having a parade, and I just think at some point we have to start addressing those. And, you know, we've asked people not to put them up, and when you do it, they put them back up on the weekend, and I know that code enforcement's not out on the weekend, but if we nail them during the week, if we catch them during the week, then we need to start having to remove those flags, and we remove them, the town meeting, code enforcement, so that everybody knows that we don't want, we not, we can't continue to junk the town up with flags. It's an eyesore, and it's against all that we stand for here in town of Maryville.
I'll, I'll get with you, and I get with Vicki as well, and we can address it this week.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I want to add to Mr. Hardaway's abandoned, blighted properties. Chief, just kind of going toward, excuse me, towards your code issues. There are way too many cars sitting here in, in homes and stuff with no plates on them. You can tell they've been there for quite some time, all over the place. So if you get a chance, I'd like you to work with Mr. Hardaway to see if we can start pulling some of those vehicles that's been sitting there. People put car covers over them, so you won't know those license plates are expired. So if you can look into that with Mr. Hardaway's committee.
Sure.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Mr. White, I think that if you see that, you know, please, you know, put the, write down license plate number.
Okay.
Get it to code enforcement, and we'll start addressing those, you know, just like they cleaned up moles down the street, we can clean up driveways as well.
Absolutely. I was glad to see when I rolled past it, it had moles, has any, doesn't have any vehicles out there, so I guess that project's moving along pretty. So is that going to resolve my question that I asked of you, Chief?
Sure, no, we'll take care of it. There's those other cars that we looked at, and a whole bunch of violators were ticketed in the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
So it's going to continue, but if there's any of them, point them out, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Dean and Barber White Community Center, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meet, Leonard and Jeff and I met, the committee met last week. We had the individuals that were concerned about the yoga class, and I would ask that Trista and Michael and I, let's get together. We have scheduled another committee meeting for the 18th at 4:30, so that's an official notice. And before that meeting, Trista and Michael, I'd like to have an answer for the yoga people. They came and voiced their opinion. Jeff and Leonard and I heard their concerns, what we want to try and do with some of these classes, some other things on the physical side. We talked about with Core, they're going to take on the project of getting the fence protection for the Weiss Family Field, the fencing for the Pop Warner kids, so that it's safe for them if they run up into the fence. We had some other items at the concession stand that they're going to be investigating as well, so the, and then Michael is looking at the Pop Warner lease as well. We're going to be talking about that in the coming weeks at that meeting on the 18th.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I would also like to add, with the amount of utility deals for the Dean and Barber White Center, I'm a night, I'm a night rider.
Yep, yep, and we did talk about the audit, right? We wanted to do the building audit with NIPSCO.
Absolutely. It's, it's just plain and simple to me to just look in there and see lights on.
Yep.
It, it doesn't make the sense to have it lit up inside at night over the, the physical part inside the gym. I even rolled past there, even in the restroom, lights are on. So that was just from my own observation. Additionally, I seen the, and I don't know what the sign on the Pop Warner Field, that's what I called it, it's on all night, so I don't understand why that would be on. So those are things I think we should look at. I think we also should ask NIPSCO, is there a way that we could, and when they do their audit, do we need all those lights on at night? You know, on the outside perimeter. I just think that costs us a lot. That's it.
Yeah, Mr. Griffin, can you address that, actually? Let's not wait for an audit. Whoever is the last person out of the building should just turn off the lights. I don't think that's too difficult.
Yeah.
And let's find out why the sign is on all the time?
Yep.
There's a circuit breaker for that.
Scoreboard.
Scoreboard, I'm at the scoreboard, yeah. Let's not wait for an audit, guys, let's get that fixed.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll take care of that.
Special Projects Committee, Chairman is Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion update for today is the nominations to serve on the DEI Committee have been submitted to Human Relations. The nominees are currently being confirmed to serve on the committee. We should, we should have the, the list of DEI Committee members to share soon. The initial training is sent for October the 19th, 2023, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. Dr. Lackey has created a culture and climate survey that was developed after speaking with department heads, and this survey will be distributed to all department heads on October the 25th.
So it's moving along, good.
So they're continuing to move along, and I, I think everybody's excited about it, so we'll see how he shakes out.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, could you have Mr. Lackey to give the council a report on how that, I mean, I know it's good to hear, but I'd like to see it in writing.
Sure. Michael, let's ask Dr. Lackey for an updated report in writing, so we can all take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White is our representative.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report, because you know, the, the Solid Waste District does meet bimonthly, so they won't have another meeting until November, and I'll be glad to submit that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Our next meeting is October the 19th.
Ah, okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Can we get a report from the NERPC meetings, so we'll understand what's going on there?
You just said we'll have one at the next meeting, because they're going to have a meeting.
Okay.
Same as your report.
What was this question?
Asked for a report from NERPC.
Well, we didn't get one from Solid Waste, so why is he worried about one from?
I, I really don't know, I'm just.
I'm not worried, Mr. Hardaway, we just need to, you've been on that committee for three years, and I haven't seen a report, so I'd like to see a report. It's not that difficult.
Next meeting is October the 19th.
Thank you.
In port, if you're welcome to come.
Thank you. Is there a way we can contact there? Because I know you guys got secretaries down there, something, somebody's taking minutes, right?
Beg your pardon?
Someone at NERPC is taking minutes, correct?
Yep.
Is there a way we can get those minutes?
Go on the website.
Does, how do I reach the website?
Go on the website, Mr. White.
What's the website address?
You're computer literate, you'll be able to figure it out.
Come on.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am more than computer literate, thank you.
Moving on to Stormwater Management Resources, our Director's Matt Lake.
Thank you, I'll be real quick. We just drafted our updated stormwater ordinance, and so we should be ready for the next council meeting. I'll get it to you guys ahead of time. I could send you guys a lined-out version, so you can see what's changed, just regulatory stuff that's changed, along with limitations on some of the enforcement that we can't do because of the state laws that have come about in the past year.
Okay.
Also, working with the Fire Department on the comprehensive emergency plan, so I'm working on the flood aspect for that particular plan, so I think it'll be passed around to different department heads as needed in order to get their input, in order to update that. Working with Sender Dalton, we're going to be updating an asset management plan for the stormwater utility, so, so we just approved a proposal, our Board did, for that particular task. Engineering-wise, we got several projects, but just a few, I guess, Independence Hill Third Edition, full engineering for the entire subdivision, as long as, as well as Country Club subdivision. We've also completed and received a community development block grant, and so we've started work on that. I'm working with Steve. We're doing sidewalks and some drainage and some tree removal. The tree removal has been completed, and so this is 58th and Massachusetts for that whole corridor, so people can walk safely to and from Broadway from various areas around there. We're doing some ditch work, that's just going to be initiated in about a week or so at Chapel Manor Ditch. This is east of Delaware Place, north of 78th, so that'll be starting very soon here. We also received, are receiving 112 trees from NIPSCO. I'm going to get with Steve and Tracy, we're going to talk about maybe the 86th Avenue corridor, the new corridor that's there, some of the medians and areas right there. Some trees can go in there, as well as maybe the neutral extension along there, might be an easy corridor, so we'll get together and go through that. And for our project at 69th and Mass, Connecticut Street, still waiting to hear back from the attorney for the, the school board, so they have everything, they've acknowledged it, they said it looks pretty decent, but they just wanted to double-check everything, and then we'll get that recorded. We're simultaneously putting it out for bid, too, so we're anticipating it's moving forward.
Thank you.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Matt. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Neal.
They have nothing scheduled at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Department Reports, Chaz Riley, representing Parks and Recreation tonight.
Yes, thank you. I've been meeting with Torrance, we started meeting to discuss how we can enhance their website and their social media presence, so I started adding some new features on their website, including a link to the Catch Corner Program, which is a tool that allows users to reserve space, volleyball, basketball courts at the Dean and Barber White Community Center. It's helpful because the users can see what's exactly available, and it makes it really easy for them to go ahead and reserve that, that space without having to call in, people looking through different things. Then also, it's helpful for the park staff, because it frees them up to do other tasks besides going ahead and reserving those courts. And then, yeah, Torrance gave me access to a bunch of different photos that they've been collecting over the past couple of years through their different events at the community center, and we'll be using those as part of the website update, and for marketing future events like their upcoming MMA fights in November, those have been very popular, those MMA events. And then, everything that will be promoted there will also be on the town website, so So, like Councilwoman Neal said, please go ahead and sign up to get those alerts so you can make sure you're getting notifications about all those events. And on Saturday, there was a nice event over at the community center with the Midwest Juco versus Prep Jamboree that featured three junior college basketball teams and three prep teams, which included the DME Academy, which is coached by former NBA standout Wesley Person. This event has been at the community center before, return event, and there was an increase in college coaches attending it, as well as the overall attendance was up there. So, the community center was proud of that event and excited to host again next year.
Nice.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This question is for Chaz Riley. Mr. Riley, now that you're sitting over there filling in for Mr. Price, I believe,
who's representing you or the Times? Is there anybody in the Times?
I'm not from the Times anymore, I don't work for the Times.
You don't do any work for any of the Times?
No, I don't do any news coverage for the Times.
So, does the Times now send a reporter here to?
That's on them, you're going to have to contact the Times.
I'm sure you would know.
I don't work for the Times anymore, so I can tell you.
I think we need to have representation.
I agree with you.
Yes, and if the Times is not here, I want to know why they're not here.
You can call there.
Because the last time they were here, you were their employee, so I'm just trying to find out.
He has nothing to do with me.
I'm just feeling funny sitting there, seeing you over there.
Mr. Price asked me to fill in for him, and that's what I'm doing tonight.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, well, I understand, I'm just saying it looks a little weird seeing you over there, and we don't have any representation out here, so.
I haven't worked for the Times in a very long time, so.
Okay.
Any of those decisions are up to them, I have nothing to do with any of them.
So, now they won't send us anybody here, so when we get these meetings now, there's nobody here to say anything? Because I want to be represented, and when I say stuff, I want to show up. And if you abandon that position, and they don't put nobody in that position after you left, I think that's a disservice to the community, thank you.
You could go ahead and tell them that.
I just did.
Okay.
Well, you really didn't because they're not here.
And that's the bad part.
You need to reach out to them, yeah.
Michelle's out there.
Well, I know Michelle's out there, but when you call the Times, they never answer the phone back. I've talked to the editor, he never calls back, so.
Okay.
I thought, I just thought I would get somebody that communicates with the Times, because he'll, whatever reports he does here, he'll send to the Times for, for like a public press release. So, we need to, we need to make sure we have some representation here. And it just can't be Michelle. Thank you.
Police Department Chief Nussus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to report, we're still continuing our efforts with the traffic blitzes. The last one that we did was on October 6th. It was on Taney, 78th Avenue, and Whitcomb. There was over 30 traffic stops that were made, and 39 traffic tickets were issued with 16 warnings also. This is something that we plan on continuing doing and hitting all our problem areas a little bit at a time. I want to say thank you for that stop sign on Maryville Road. That's helping a lot, it's slowing people down, because it's such a long stretch of straight road that people just don't pay attention to how fast they're going, and that's something I think that's going to help. One of the other things I wanted to report, I've been getting a lot of messages on our Facebook Messenger for the police department, and people are reporting crimes hours after they've happened. Just one thing if I can advise the public, when you see a crime, can you please just call 911 or call the dispatch center? Because there's often times where somebody's not monitoring that Facebook page, and their complaints go unnoticed for hours, sometimes even a day after something's happened. So, 911 or 219-660-0001, that's the dispatch center, and we'll get a police officer out there ASAP. Last, I want to talk about the October 26th tax talk that we're going to be doing at the Dean and Barbara White Center. Believe it or not, I am pretty excited about it. Get a chance to give everybody an idea of the police department, how it works, a little brief history, and most importantly, why we cost so much to everybody. So, once again, inviting everybody that wants to come. It's going to be at the Mike Anderson Event Center, the Dean and Barbara White Center, October 26th, 6:00 p.m., that's all.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, I just wanted to address this to Chief Costas. I talk to him at least twice a week sometimes. I just wanted to say I was pleased with seeing improvements in policing here. I can see some of the stance. Again, I'll say I'm a night rider, and before I go to White House at 3:00 in the morning, I see police out there where I hadn't been seeing them. So, I just wanted to tell you, I think you're doing a great job, and I think this reflects, you know, from my own personal experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it, Mr. President.
Planning and Building Department, Ms. Sheila Shine.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. The Planning and Building Department continues to issue permits. The Liberty Estates are constant, Luxor Homes are pulling permits out of their Savannah Cove and Savannah Ridge. The Edward Rose Apartment Buildings out in 93rd, they have, have, they have all of their permits for all of their apartments, including the community room and the garages. So, they're all set. And then we did have a barb meeting for the third Silos at the Sanders Farm Building. Continue to do that. But there's one thing that I want to remind the residents of is please, when contractors approach you at your homes, please take their card, go in the house, and don't sign anything. There is an asphalt contractor that is going around, and he's saying $99. You sign the, you sign the agreement with him. And when you get down to the bottom line, he's saying $99 per pound, and the bill is $7,000 to $10,000. And you've signed, and they want their money. So, I'm asking all residents, when contractors approach you, you're working in your yard, don't think that it's such a great thing. Take their cards, tell them thank you, I'll call you later, don't get any controversy with them, because this particular contractor took advantage of three of our residents. And so, they are wanting their money because they, they do have signed agreements. But it is so important that you don't pay attention to solicitors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sheila. Street Department, Mr. King.
So, Street Department, so the North Barn Facility closed October 1st for the season. As far as branches, the residents can bring them to our facility at 13 West 73rd Avenue. We do have a team working at the North Barn, they're tub grinding all of the branches that we had picked up all summer long. We'll be starting hauling, hauling that stuff out of there tomorrow. The leaf vac, I haven't seen the newsletter yet, the leaf vac starts October 16th, that's next Monday. We will have five crews out and about, so just be patient. And again, as Councilman Minchuck mentioned, you know, if, if we have to adjust the schedule because the leaves aren't falling, then that's what we'll do. What else I got? So, we received two RFQs for the townwide traffic study. They're in my office, Matt and I hopefully will get them reviewed this week to select a firm to start on our townwide traffic study. And also, as we mentioned earlier, 86th Avenue is open between Broadway and Maryville Road. It opened October 6th. This was a 100% locally funded project by the town, $1.5 million. So, it's up and running, it looks great, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. President, to Steve. Steve, where are we at on the stop sign at 91st and, at Vigo and 93rd?
Uh, I believe the locates were called in for that this morning, so it should be this, probably later this week then.
Okay, thank you.
Interim Town Manager, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Madam Clerk Treasure Pro Tempore. I've issued already a written report, as I do bimonthly for you. It is in your email, as well as your mailbox. Probably you'll have more success with your email than your mailbox. Some are discovering we had mailboxes here, as I was, so. I did want to add two things, unless there's a question to me with regard to what I've written to you. On October 26th will be our next staff meeting, that is, at variance with our customary scheduling time. We ordinarily have those immediately following, Wednesday immediately following our plenary meeting of the council. We're moving that at the request of the Human Resource Department to meet with Dr. Lackey at 2:00 p.m. to give a briefing. So, I will try to get that report as requested earlier, but it may be that that meeting will be part of that informing process, so I wanted to inform you of that. In addition, as referenced by our venerable Stormwater Executive Director, we are working on having a capital management plan. I intend to have Mr. Peterson, who actually assists us with how we manage both fixed assets, as well as our moving assets, take our study session in November, excuse me, our staff meeting in November, and we intend to have the staff be briefed on just some new protocols that we think that we need to have to improve the management of that, which will be a reporting protocol each month, if rolling stock has changed or not, and how we're going to value those. And he's in the best position to do that, and he says it no extra charge. He's extremely eager to do the presentation. I've worked with him in my prior service, and he's very capable, and I look forward to that. Unless the council or anyone has a question for me, I'll be pleased to be seated so we can proceed with the meeting.
So, Michael, do me a favor, for, for the residents, I know what it means, but what is, what is rolling stock? What is that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. At the direction of the President, we're working on your behalf, so you own a lot of assets through the name of the town of Maryville. Many of them are police cars or trucks that are assigned to the Public Works Department, very important. And fire trucks as part of the fire territory, that's rolling stock, that's just a quick description. It can also be this really curious device that is under the aegis of the Stormwater Management Department that looks cool, it looks like this aluminized tank, grass mower, marsh, swamp device. I can't describe it better than that. It's a remarkable device that helps us do work in managing the watershed for you. Those items actually, each has a capital asset value because of a policy already adopted by this council, and we have to manage that for you. Part of managing that for you helps us know when we need to replace it, based on useful life, and sometimes you have to keep it longer based on design life. Best example, my car I drive here is 11 years old, and I'm not sad about that. Its useful life is five, so it's fully depreciated, but its design life, I'm trying to push to 12 as much as I can, because then I'll be able to afford a new car perhaps. But those are the kinds of things that are important for us to manage as part of our ongoing stewardship on your behalf for the assets that are owned in your name through the town of Maryville, to do the good work that you've allowed us to do on your behalf, managing your public ways and the rest of it.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
We have a lot of rolling stock, don't we?
You do have a lot.
It's a lot to manage. Go ahead, Mr. White.
I have a question for you in terms of, a request actually, not a question. For the past three years, keep going back, because we had a town manager that didn't do stuff. I think you're doing well for the short period of time that you've been here. So, I'm going to ask you what I asked him. I would like to see a pie chart of what each ward gets in the terms of dollars, like community crawls in, federal dollars, paving, those type of things, because I don't get it. The last time I asked the, the former town manager, he told me to go down there to the, to the clerk's office and get it myself. So, those are the experiences I've had with them, so I would like, sir, for you to, so I could at least see where, where, where some of the communities are being shorted. I know my community is being shorted, but I'd like to see it in a pie chart where all the dollars are going, if that's possible.
Counselor White, first, thank you for giving me the gentle compliment of tasking me with something.
Yes, sir.
And my response is not to give affirmation at all about who served in this position previously. I've already come to love the position, but I know that it's challenging, so I'll just try to distinguish myself. If you'll allow me some time to try to get something for you, and not limit me to a pie chart, but something that's readily accessible.
Yes, sir.
I'll do my very best for you. I just want to add, however, when we're dealing with pure public goods, one example might be patrol. I have no idea where the ward lines are, I'll, I'll get myself acquainted with that, but all of us are getting public safety right now. Whether we're getting it directly or not will depend if I speed when I leave here, for example. And then I'll get direct service, I hope. Actually, I hope I don't speed. My point is, is that sometimes measuring the allocation of pure public goods like that is more difficult, but I take the spirit of your quest, Counselor, and if you'll give me a little time, I'll try to faithfully respond to that. If you don't mind, I'll share it with the members of the council as well.
Sure, sure. Because I think we all need to know, but I had to speak for myself. And I did apologize for stepping back a couple of years back, because I, maybe that wasn't a fair question to you, but that's the response that I had had before. So, I appreciate it, doesn't actually have to be in a pie chart, it could be also on a spreadsheet if you like, or however how you want to communicate.
I'll do my very best to try to be responsive, Counselor White. I think I accept the spirit, and if I'm having difficulty, no objection from the council, I'll contact you directly and try to get some more clarification. But within a reasonable time, I'll do my very best to try to be responsive to your request.
Thank you, sir, and, and a reasonable time would be for me after November, if I get it by November.
Well, that's a lot of lead time, I appreciate that, Counselor.
I think that'd give you a little more time to shake and bake for what I call, because I know, I know you came here, you already got your hands full, and I know you do like your job.
I do.
And, and I appreciate you, you're doing your job, so that's it, Mr. President.
Well, I appreciate your grace, and I'll do my very best to respond. Mr. President, if there's nothing further, I'll be pleased to be seated.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have no first reading ordinances, but we do have a couple second reading ordinances. The first one is Ordinance 23-23. It's the ordinance of the town of Maryville creating an appropriation for various fire protection territory funds for the year 2023 that were not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of Ordinance 22, I'm sorry, 23-23, on second and final reading. Just for clarity, this was an appropriation for the Fire Department, the amount is $68,000. Questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Can you tell me what the $68,000 is for?
Mr. Minchuck.
I emailed that to you, Leonard. If you give me a second, I can pull that email up and read it to you exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
It's for insurance reasons, I believe.
I'm sure you did send that to me, but I have not had a town email.
I definitely wanted to exact, I know it's for insurance purposes, to where they paid ahead of time, but of course, insurance things change throughout the years, and now they take that money and miss, put it to pay for the differences.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me.
Does that satisfy your question?
It does, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this Ordinance 23-23? This is second and final reading. Seeing now, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes. Six eyes, the motion carries. Moving on to Ordinance 23-24, it's a notice of taxpayers, two taxpayers, excuse me, for the budget year of 2024. Mr. Hardaway made reference to this earlier in the evening. Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Didn't we, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we have the public hearing last council meeting with this? And this is just.
Supposed to be on first reading of the budget.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, right.
Okay, well, at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we table approving our budget at this time, because we still need to reduce our budget by $2.5 million. And we've been working on that, and hopefully by October 24th, at our next council meeting, we'll have the correct numbers, and we'll be able to approve the budget at that time, because it is, it has to be passed by November the 1st.
Second.
So, let me ask for clarity first for Mr. Hardaway. So, you, you want to continue this matter until our October 24th meeting at 6:30?
Yes, sir, at 6:30. Yes, sir, thank you.
Chair, recognize Mr. Pettit for a second. I would like to ask, before we vote and under discussion, Mr. Griffin or Clerk Treasure's office, do we receive any taxpayer petitions from any residents?
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Madam Clerk Treasure Pro Tempore. Actually, I conferred with Madam Clerk Treasure Pro Tempore, and we are satisfied that we're reliably advised that no taxpayer petitions have been filed, and so there's no need to respond to any at this time, under the statute.
Thank you very much. Trista, anything to add before we take this action?
I had approached the podium to suggest just a small change of language of the motion, but Your Honor has already taken care of that.
Okay.
Question, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Now, are we short $2.5 million, or what actually came in was $2.5 million than what we have?
No, as I explained during previous meeting, the requests from the department heads were presented to you as counsel for their request for the budget for 2024. And comparing that to the expected revenues coming in, those requests, wish lists, some one-time requests as well, not simply just operational expenses, were higher than the revenues coming in. And so, it is not a situation of the budget being, that the budget itself needs to be cut. It's a, a matter of the fact that the requests need to be reduced down to what the revenues are. The budget's not been established yet, you haven't voted on it.
Yeah, I, I just find that, I don't think it has, well, let me rephrase that. $2.5 million's got to go, be cut from somewhere. Or, as you say, our, our department head submitted $2.5 million more than what we have coming in in revenue.
Right.
So.
So, that happens every year, it's not unusual at all.
Okay.
And every year, council whittles away the things that are above and beyond what is needed for the town. We also sometimes have to whittle away some things that are needed, but just simply cannot be afforded. Afforded, of course, you, you're familiar, you've been here every year to do that with them.
Yes.
It is the council's intention, as it always has been, to pass a balanced budget, meaning the expenditures that are approved come in line and match the revenues so that it's on balance and can be funded and paid for appropriately.
We also, Mr. White, just for clarity, it allowed us to move monies around in different areas. For example, purchasing police cars out of the general fund was a big hit, $160,000. So if we can fund that through other sources, maybe a TIF district or something like that, it removes it from the general fund. So there's a $160,000 reduction right there.
Okay.
So it allows the council to review all that. And we did that Tuesday at the Budget and Finance Meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't there.
Right, you weren't. So I'm trying to kind of fill you in on some other ideas. So it allows us to move money around. So just because the department head requested something, we don't have to say no. We have to find a different way to pay for it.
Sure.
Or eventually say no if you don't have the funds. But this is not unusual in any way. A department head's turned in a wish list. So, and what I just talked about was called what? Rolling stock?
Yes. So, so would that come from the RDC, Mr. President?
It could.
It could. It's an eligible, yeah, it's an eligible cost.
Yes. Because I think I got from Mr. Griffin, Griffin, maybe at the last council meeting, where I think that he said the law of, with the RDC would allow the, specifically my concerns with the Police Department, would allow some of those dollars to be used for operations and acquisitions, for better or lack of words.
That's what we need to look at.
Okay. Thank you. That's answer my question. Thank you.
So to clarify the motion, Mr. Hardaway's motion was to continue this matter for consideration at our next town council meeting on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. And I believe Mr. Pettit's second still stands. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Moving on, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Do we still need to have some type of public hearing, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, I think you'll be fine without that at this time. I beg the council's pardon. Mr. President, and members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer pro tempore, I believe you'll be fine without that. I was having a conversation with Patricia. Sometimes the DLGF gives signals. They have referred to the adoption hearing from time to time in their guidance literature. But our careful reading of the statute, it's clear we have to have at least one. It's not clear about the others. So I think we're going to be fine. We're moving this to January, excuse me, October 24th. We'll take a look and see if there's guidance that's further clarifying that till then. I think we're satisfied and recommending to you that you can proceed without fear.
Well, it will be a second reading at the next meeting, which will require a public comment too, right? So.
It's entirely up to the council.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Michael. Moving on to resolutions, we have resolution 23-34. It's a resolution, the town of Maryville transferring monies in our general fund. You can see there the decrease is a total of $70,000 from various items. The increase is for our general electric and gas. The amount is $70,000, and net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Neal for approval of this transfer of funds as resolution 23-34. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan. We have the accounts payable voucher summary for the ARP purchases for October 10th, 2023. Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amount of the voucher for this evening is $21,123.05. I'll make a motion that we approve the amount of $21,123.05.
Second.
Is it a five or an eight? It's so tiny.
It's a five.
It's a five, okay. You're correct. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of the ARP accounts payable voucher. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the BZA and large gathering actions. Ms. Schein.
Yes, we have one petitioner, and that petitioner is the town of Maryville. This is a variance of use approval for a electronic message center that is going to be located at our street department. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval from Section 21-189.8 to allow an electronic message sign to be located at 13 West 73rd Avenue. The town of Maryville Street Department would like to insert a 8x4 LED electronic message center. The total signage would be 64 square feet. Petitioner would like to advertise street closures, weather information, and other important information from the town of Maryville. Mr. President, there were two residents out at our border zoning appeals meeting. They were concerned about the lighting of the sign. So a condition was placed on it that the sign would be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM and will be dimmed after 9:00 PM. Mr. King said that he would also work with those two residents if that wasn't enough to turn off the sign afterwards or further dim the sign.
So normally those signs have a solar.
Photocell.
Photocell, and they're brighter during the daytime and they dim lower at night. So they're not as bright and blinding. Is your sign going to have that?
Correct, yeah, it'll have those capabilities, yes, and we will use them. And as I spoke to the residents at the BZA, if it didn't dim enough, we'd make further adjustments to the sign or if we had to turn it off overnight, then, you know, that's what we would have to do to, to accommodate.
Well, we should turn it off at night because Mr. White's going to see it at 3:00 in the morning.
Absolutely.
That's true.
Absolutely.
Doesn't need to be on, so I think we should turn it off at night. No one's going to see it, so.
Steve, is this the same manufacturer that's out front here at Town Hall?
Uh, yeah, this was, yeah, Landmark Signs, they've done.
Is it a Watchfire or a Yescow?
It's Watchfire.
Yeah, Watchfire.
It's Watchfire.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I do, Mr. President. Is there a cost associated with that?
Yeah, the sign, the sign was, the sign was roughly $49,000, Leonard. Our Councilman White, and the electric was $11,000.
Yeah, we had already approved that, I believe, at a previous meeting.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Much by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White for approval of the town of Maryville petition for an electronic sign located at the street department. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. King.
Thank you.
We thank the council for their grace on that, Mr. President.
Sure.
We do.
Moving on tonight, is there any old business before us? New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, I just wanted to, I was going to read it into record. I think I'm going to give the council opportunity to, to see the complaint that I filed with the Secretary of State. I wanted to at least give the council opportunity to, to see it before I just say it right now.
How will you send it to us? I didn't see anything.
I will see it in the, I don't know if you got that this morning.
I did, Counsel White.
Yes. And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but unless you're normal up half the night because I'm bored. I did write a complaint, and it goes back to the redistricting situation that happened last year. I was in a hospital, so I never got a chance to get that vote on that. So I think that my complaint then, that I didn't think it was appropriate, but I still want to have the council opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Do you want to back up the, the Community Development Block grant program that I think Matt mentioned? That was for $143,000, and we rewarded that through the Lake County Economic Development. Correct. So that's the amount, and that's newfound money for us, which is a great program. So thanks for doing your hard work on that, guys. Moving on to public comment. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for a public comment, if someone wants to do that.
My name's Chris Hulse. I'm at 800 West 73rd Avenue. I have a few questions. Roughly 10, 10 days ago, I was informed that replication of the Great Stock Trail sign was, cost too much. Can we confirm that? And if so, do we know how much it was, the estimate came in at?
Do you have a figure, Steve, or?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have a figure, but as we've talked.
We're going to put the original sign back up.
The original sign's going back.
I don't know why that's an issue with the.
Is, is that a, can I hold you guys to that? Is it coming back for sure?
Yeah.
Can I have a date on that, please?
I, I, I can't give you a date on that.
Yeah.
Because we really need to see it this fall.
Approximate date?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't have an approximate date.
The state is willing to meet with Bella, Pettit, us residents, and the state, and the Historical Society. The state's willing to all meet with us.
So going forward, do we have expectations on a date? And once again, do I have a firm commitment from you folks that it's coming back?
Yeah, as far as I know, we're going to look for locates to make sure we don't dig in. We have to put it in cement. We have to make sure it's secure so that nobody can walk away with it.
Sure.
Okay, we don't want it knocked down, but I think it's going to be protected now by the big borders. So I don't think it's going to be a problem. As far as a, a date, I don't have a date. It depends on.
I know you've got a lot on your plate, Steve, but.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, sitting right here, I, I mean, as we've talked, I can't give you a date right now.
Yeah, I think we've been really accommodating, guys. So if you just kind of give us some time to work it out, we're going to get the sign put back up. That's all. I talked to Jeff about it. Everyone's, everyone's, would like to do that, so.
Why we ask is because we're working with the state. The state's asked us to ask you that because they're willing to come in. They got the story, the historical stuff like that involved in it.
Okay, come in to do what, though, guys? Well, I understand what the.
So, so going forward, we have your commitment that we are going to have it returned back. And just to reaffirm, you're just looking for locations so it can be secured, and then we're just waiting on a date, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and you and I have talked about that in my office, and when we're ready to do it, I was going to talk to you about the placement of it.
I, I understand.
Right. I mean, our department's very, very busy right now, and we're doing the best we can.
I understand that. But please forgive me for being as diligent as I am because I talked to our neighbor Frank the other day, and, well, he's been hearing the story for years. So this hasn't just came up. Frank was told for years that it wasn't, that he was going to get it back, and here, still we are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, President Bella, Madam Clerk, members of the town council of Maryville. My name is Jenny Weber. I'm the executive director at the Humane Society of Hobart. And we are a nonprofit animal shelter that has been in Hobart for 70 years. We're on a mission to build and strengthen pet families, and we build them through sheltering homeless strays and adopting them into loving homes. And we strengthen them through our life-saving programs. I'm here tonight to address the correspondence I sent to you a couple months ago. And I'm actually here to reintroduce myself because there is now a new town manager. And I wanted to address the correspondence that I sent. The Humane Society of Hobart takes in around 2,500 animals a year, 2,500 to 3,000. A thousand of those animals, more than a thousand of those animals, are currently coming in from out of jurisdiction. And Maryville currently, or today, we have taken in 92 animals from Maryville. We're happy to help. We want to collaborate. I have met with Chief Nusis on multiple occasions, and we've had incredible discussions. But I'd like to take the opportunity to meet with you further to discuss the expended loss against our budget as a result of the 92 extra animals that are coming in, quite possibly maybe more within the next couple months. It totals around $280,000 combined expensed against our budget with that $1,000 coming in from different jurisdictions, and that's just not sustainable for us. So I'm here tonight with our president, Jane Cornelius. If you'll wave your hand, Jane. And we're visiting with other municipalities to see if we cannot get some support, meet you in the middle with this expense as our adoption revenue does offset a portion of that cost of care for animal impound services. And furthermore, we would like to invite you to the table to meet with our coalition, which meets quarterly. And we sit down at the table to come together to find out how we can solve this public problem, which is very costly for municipalities, and I recognize that. Even though we're in a 501(c)(3), we have municipal contracts with Hobart Lake Station and New Chicago, meaning we're a side law enforcement when there are incidents with animals in the community, house fires, homicides, suicides, federal, state, and local animal police raids. So as we, as we move into the future, we want to collaborate. We're here for twofold. One, for support, financial support. And two, to come together in a collaborative way to solve this problem. Mr. Griffin, I was very happy to see that you've taken this new position. I was with Humane Indiana when you made those life-saving changes in Highland. And I think you really have some good leadership here as you move forward and build your animal control and field services. So thank you for your time tonight. Mr. Griffin, I will send you an email with my contact information and CCU chief as well. Thank you very much for your consideration and time.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all you do, and thank you for taking our 92 animals.
It's bound to go up, sir.
I'm sure it is. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and the council members on the panel, to the citizens of Maryville. My name is Varad William Butt. I am a proud homeowner here in Maryville for the past 15 years. I've just been informed about the meetings you have here on Tuesday night. And the reason for my visit is roughly about three weeks ago, there was a major pipe burst in front of my house on a Sunday that happened at about 10, 10:23 to be exact. I was without water all the way to Monday morning till 5:00 AM. I think American Water had got the notification, came out, fixed the problem. But roughly two days prior, I mean, roughly two days after that, there was a gas leak in the same area. So I was told that not only American Water came out, they did something to the gas line where NIPSCO, NYSOR, has to come out. So as a result of that, my front yard looks like a yard down in the country field in the modern Rinsalier. So I was just trying to figure out who I need to consume this project to or move this matter further to see how I can get my yard restored. In addition to that, the yard that got destroyed three years ago on June 14, there was a high-speed chase that led a chase, a car that ran into a tree in front of my house. So now I have a dead bark tree was the result that an individual was being chased by three counties, deputies, and three Maryville police. I'm pretty sure y'all probably remember that. So in the same yard, I have a tree that's about to, in time, maybe fall over with my yard being destroyed. So I was just wondering from the council, do anybody got any ideas or plans of seeing how to get my yard restored?
And what is your address?
850 West 72nd Drive.
850, 850?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Have you contacted American Water?
I contacted them, and all I was told that they were going to subcontract a landscape. And they said they're on back order maybe to three months to six months. I mean, that was a verbiage language I received from them.
Unfortunately for you, American Water is a private entity. They have nothing to do with the town. The town has no affiliation with that utility at all. I've run into the same problem you did, actually. So you just got to keep on, I hate to say it. As far as the tree, I could ask you to come over and take a look at it, see what we can do.
And what about NYSOR? Is they're part of the Maryville community or they're a different entity as well?
We have no utilities in our town whatsoever except for Stormwater.
Stormwater.
We do have some contacts with those companies, though. We do have some contacts with those companies, though, and I'll turn to Steve to reach out to our contacts, the ones that we call when there's an emergency, to see if they can help. And I think, did we talk about your tree before? Did we come out and take a look at it?
I, I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. President, but if you did, uh, it was, like I said, it was three years ago, and there was nothing dead on that matter, and, you know, in time, you know, the tree's starting to die and decay, you know, sooner or later will, will fall over, you know.
Is the tree in the parkway between the sidewalk and the street?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Matt, take a look at that, see if we can add it to the tree replacement program. We'll take a look, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council members, uh, Town administrators, community members, and esteemed guests. My name is Macy O'Rainey, from the Prairie Creek Homeowners Association of Maryville, Indiana. We are part of Ward One. Uh, Mr. President, I'm curious to know, and would like to know, would this board consider, at any point in time, having a trained parliamentarian to accompany the Town Council meetings, uh, during its existence? And this person will help to not only, uh, speed the meeting along, but make sure that they govern civility among, uh, council representatives, as well as set time limits for public commentary?
Something we can consider, sure, send us a proposal.
Certainly, and I, I make that recommendation based on several meetings that I have attended, and I think that for a more perfect union, that a consideration for a parliamentarian could be something that's, uh, beneficial for the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the council and staff here. My name is Curtis Pearson, I'm one of the elected precinct amendments in Maryville. I'm also one of the elected board members of Ross, Maryville Ross Township. Been out here for twenty-four years, living out here on property, and I love Maryville. Glad to see some of the new members, too, on the council up here. But my question here is for information, and for the whole council. I've got people that's interested in the property, uh, the Star Plaza, and, uh, it's vacant property, and what I want to know, well, what they would like to know, is who owns it? Is it, uh, for sale? Can you build on it? What's the status of the Star Plaza?
Let me take it, Joe.
What is the status of that?
I'll take it, Curtis, since it's in my ward. Star Plaza property is approximately thirty-eight point five acres with five different key numbers, on the north side of Eightieth Place, uh, bounded by Eightieth Place, Rhode Island, Delaware. It is still owned by the White family, uh, Mrs. White and her children. They have different LLCs that are associated with each of those five parcels. Yes, it is a buildable property. It is zone C-three PUD, Sheila?
Yes.
C-three PUD Highway Commercial.
I think the actual ownership's in the foundation, though.
Yeah.
So you can still build on this property? I mean, it's not wet water, anything like that, I mean, it's vacant and nobody's talking about it, so I was wondering, can you build on it?
You can build on it.
Okay. Uh, do you have any contact information that I could have, uh, that I could, you know?
There's a for-sale sign on the property.
Yeah, there's a for-sale sign, I think, on the property.
It's on the sign, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't, I don't have it on top of my memory, but there's a sign.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. You bet.
Brian Masrach, two-oh-one-E-sixty-eighth Place. Uh, I'd like to start off with, uh, councilperson Neil, thank you for the QR code. Uh, I've been begging for years for better communication, this is an excellent way to get ahold of people, especially the younger people. This is an excellent channel, so thank you for spearheading that. When we talk about things like, um, the stop signs on Maryville Road, uh, when you're heading south on Maryville Road, from the stoplight, a block later, it creates a pretty big traffic jam up on, uh, Maryville Road. But one of the things that I noticed was that the stoplight, or the stop sign, is a flashing LED. I remember Mr. and Mrs. Congressman, uh, from, uh, my ward six over here on Madison Street, they begged for light-up, uh, stop signs, because people were blowing the stop signs over here, and we couldn't afford them. I'm not really sure how it is that we can afford to put LED stop signs in some places and not other places. I don't understand how we have funds for some people. Um, a couple of meetings ago, Mrs. Pamela Thompson, over on Fifty-sixth Place in North Maryville, she begged for barriers, so that people don't drive, uh, into her house, which has happened three times. I don't know how we're kinda making these decisions, I would think that safety of our residents would, you know, be important to us. And, Mr. President, when you say, when you're, we're talking about our Turkey Creek residents, and you say, give us some time, give us a chance, who, who gave the estimate for the sign? Or the replacement sign, who gave the estimate?
Landmark, Landmark Signs provided that, Brian.
Okay, 'cause I got ahold of Landmark Signs, they don't even know what I'm talking about. They said that they had no idea about making a replacement sign.
That is, that is completely incorrect information.
In addition.
Kevin, Kevin Markle and myself stood out in front of the museum with Scott Lovell from Landmark Signs. He took pictures of the sign, he looked at the sign, so who, so whoever you talked to at Landmark Signs gave you completely wrong information.
I talked to a Kevin, I didn't get his last name, so.
You, you, you didn't talk to the right person, then, because that's completely false.
Completely understand, but replicating a sign like that would be illegal with the state seal, is that not correct? That's against the law. It's also against the law to move a state historic sign from its place without notifying or requesting from the state? Is that not correct? I think that's.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't move the sign, the sign was moved to the museum, I don't know how many years ago, because it kept getting damaged, so who made that decision? Is, that's way before my time, um, but if it can't be moved, because it has a state symbol on it?
State seal.
State seal?
No, it can't be moved, it can't be replicated, is what Brian said. Yeah.
Okay.
We're not, we're not gonna replicate it.
Yeah, we won't, yeah.
State approval.
Yeah.
The point, the, the, the point, though, is this, the sign should be moved, it should be moved post haste. This is now the third or fourth meeting where we are gonna take a look at it, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna try and get to it. How about we commit a time for action? It will be done by this time. White, that would be an interesting thing to do.
Well, you know what we did? We, we, we did the center, we got it painted, we put in the boulders, we put in the bushes, I think you've seen a lot of activity and progress, which you praised the council, uh, last meeting about, so now the last piece is moving the sign. We're gonna get the sign put back, all I said was give us some time. It's not like number one on the priority of what needs to be done in the town, guys. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. This is not the most important thing in our lives, Brian, but we'll get the sign put up, okay?
I, I understand.
I can't give you a date, that's, that even wouldn't make sense, you know.
Well, the state's asking us, because we are working.
Well, have the state contact us directly, we're happy to talk to them, guys, really.
One more, Mr. President.
Who's that?
He has the floor.
Well, well, he's asking questions.
Audience members shouldn't interject, though.
Yeah, so, really, but Brian, go ahead. We're trying to solve something here, sir. Go ahead.
I was also curious about the eminent domain status on, um, Mo's place over there at, uh, Seventy-first and Broadway. I, the town was moving forward on.
The town, the town owns that property.
We own the property.
So you did take, uh, course with eminent domain and have taken possession of that property?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Hello, everyone, my name is Trina Barandall, and this is actually my first time ever seeing any of this stuff going on. We've been homeowners, as my husband Ron, for twelve years, on Delaware Street, we're in between Pierce and the high school. And a couple of my concerns come from that area, um, because I had left messages with code enforcement and never heard anything back. Um, so I believe, was it Hargate, or? Hardaway?
Hardaway.
Are you with code enforcement?
No, the chief of police is.
Oh, okay. Well, my first challenge is the house that sits directly across the street from Pierce Middle School. I drive by that house, um, often, because I'm retired, so I'm running errands and taking care of stuff. My major concern with that house having the abundance of garbage in the front yard is that it is spreading into their backyard. Now, today, there was a blue empty dumpster box sitting on their driveway, but me and a neighbor discussed, we don't even know if they're bringing stuff to put in the dumpster, or if they're taking things from the dumpster to put in their yard.
Seventieth Place, ma'am?
Yes.
South side of Pierce?
Yes.
Yes, next to Arroyo's house.
I don't know the neighbors right there, I'm, I'm around the street, but just a few days ago, I saw a refrigerator standing in the front yard, next to two water heaters, and the refrigerator had doors on it. It's my understanding that if you put a refrigerator or a freezer outside, you are not to have doors on it to prevent children from getting in there and getting hurt. So it's simple little things like that with kids, toys in their yard. As a grandma, I'm concerned that those children are playing around stuff that's going to hurt them. And if the front of the house looks like that, I don't even want to think how they're living on the inside. I want to make sure that if there's kids there or elderly people there, that they are being cared for, and in a healthy environment, and not at risk for being hurt. With Halloween coming up, there's gonna be a lot of kids because of the school being right there, going through and past their house, past that yard, and it's dangerous. Um, I went through the ordinances, um, with help from people, you know, that have been in the town longer than me, but I went through the ordinances, and it seems like, at this point, if there's been previous complaints on that property, the town does have it in the ordinances, that they can take it upon themselves to hire somebody to clean up that mess, and then the person who's made the mess has to reimburse the town for that. So at what state do, uh, stage are we with getting that dangerous situation taken care of?
Costa, you want to answer that?
Sure, actually, we, um, we've been addressing this for the last couple of weeks, and they got the dumpster.
I've been addressing it for a couple of years now.
I know, I, all I can tell you is I've been addressing it for the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
And when I seen it, I, I was appalled, so I made sure that code enforcement stayed on them, and they have that dumpster there, and everything's supposed to be gone by the end of the week, is what they told us, if not, they're gonna start getting fined daily.
Well, they, they, uh, were actually, when the dumpster showed up, they showed up with more trucks, and more stuff in the yard.
Yeah, they have till the end of this week, and then a, after that, that's, that was the agreement that was made.
And I, I heard this said a few years ago, so I don't know.
No, I said yours.
I'm not gonna stand for it.
You want to enforce flags, and you won't go on.
Yeah. That was crazy to me, could be in my first meeting to come to, and I've got like a list of things that are like safety issues, and there's people arguing about if a flag should be taken down or fined. Like, there's, that's, I don't understand how, how that works. So that's why I'm here, I'm here to learn, and I'll make mistakes, I'm sure, but I wanted to make sure that I brought that to the attention. And then the second thing I would like to see for the community with, um, elections coming up, is we have a lot of great towns around us, cities, we're, we're a good town, um, that have community nights during the week for their neighbors and kids and everybody to go to, there's live music, there's food, there's food trucks, there's, um, vendors, there's stuff for kids to do, and I was just wondering if Maryville, would it all be interested in doing something like that? I don't have connections with it, I just want to see it done, um, like something around, like Hidden Lake, you know, to generate revenue and community, like, getting together and doing stuff, getting the kids off their electronics things, and into, you know, learning how to be kids and socialize. Those are my things.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Costa, you'll follow up on that property, right?
Yes, I know exactly where it's at.
Yeah, I was out there looking at it this past week and the week before.
Ironically, the house next door to that was just as bad five, seven years ago. That one got cleaned up, and the one next door, now the one she's talking about is, is worse than, and you probably know who lived, used to live there, Costa.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Yep.
Good evening, last but not least, I'm, I'm here, it's my turn. My name is Vern Hind, I'm not, not a stranger here. I had the opportunity last Thursday night to attend a meeting at the Dean and Barbara White Center, uh, sponsored by the town of Maryville, about the vision for Maryville. And I don't know if any of you had seen his presentation or any, anything, but, um, I hate to say it, uh, he doesn't have a clue of what's going on. His vision, everything that they did was in Kansas. Now, there was only nine or ten people there, and I was sitting about fifteen minutes, fifteen feet from the individual that was speaking. And next door, unfortunately, that room had the cheerleaders from some school there. So, it was very, very disruptive, but I don't think I missed anything he said, because it, it was of no value. If you have the opportunity, uh, to see his presentation or even look at it, um, if, if you spend a lot of money on, on what he has to say, it's wasted. Because, uh, like I say, he's got all these trails and everything planned, nothing for the senior citizens, which I happen to be in that category. But unfortunately, uh, it was a wasted two hours for me, and like I say, there was nine or ten other people there. I raised my hand on several occasions, but he never called on me, I was fifteen, fifteen feet from him, so I guess, I'm kinda hard to miss, too, but anyhow, he, uh, he wouldn't call me, people were blur, blurting out, and here and there, so anyhow, that was my take on the meeting, unfortunately.
Actually, there's gonna be several more meetings, it's an ongoing project, sir, yeah. Thank you. So for announcements, we have our next RDC meeting on October twenty-fourth at six o'clock, the next council meeting is October twenty-fourth at six-thirty, and our trunk-or-treat is on, is it October?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, that's the trunk-or-treat, and then trick-or-treat is on thirty-first.
Yes.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
There's a planning commission meeting, Mr. President, on the next Tuesday, the seventeenth. And then we have a Dean and Barbara White Committee meeting on the eighteenth.
Right. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Okay.